Bridgewater Town Council to order on this Tuesday, February 20th, 2024. Could you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have not received any notices of any veterans that have passed these past two weeks, but could we please have a moment of silence to recognize those who we have lost? Thank you. Just to remind everybody that tonight's meeting is being aired live and is being recorded. We have a pretty full agenda tonight. We'll move right through these things, hopefully, and take any, obviously, any comments the council has. So we'll move on to approval of the minutes from our previous meeting of February 6th.
Motion to approve?
Second.
There's a motion to approve and there's a second. Any discussion on the minutes? We do not need to do a voice, we do not need to do roll call, right? Because we do.
We don't.
Do not, right. We do not need to do roll call votes this evening because all counselors that are present are, there are no counselors online. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the minutes have been approved. Announcements for the president. Again, I do not have any announcements in my package this evening. We do not have any proclamations this evening to read. We'll move on to citizens' open forum. I would ask any citizen that wishes to speak during the citizens' open forum to please come forward, state your name and address, and try to keep it to three minutes or less.
Tina Larson, 40, Amherst Ave. I am here in reference to a regulation 2022-001 about the signs for political events. And so that particular regulation says that signs cannot be put out until 30 days before the election. Now that we have early voting, which for this year's spring election is April 6th, I would like to request that that regulation be 30 days from the early voting date, which will be March 5th. I did send, send an email to all of the council and to Mr. Dutton. Any comments?
No comments. Did you want to address that now?
Because according to the council rules, there's, there's no engagement.
Sure, right.
But I can say that we are looking at that and likely will make changes. And I'll, as soon as I get our legal department to look at that and bless it, I'm going to send out something revised.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there anyone else this evening who wishes to speak during citizens' open forum? Yes?
Good evening. Ed Ivaldi, Boxwood Lane. As I reviewed the agenda for tonight's meeting, I was surprised to see an item under the town manager's report, item IB, that had to do with citizens' comments, since it's usually something that the council deals with. But then I heard that that particular item is to address a legal question through the town attorney, so that makes sense. I do, however, think it's worth spending a minute or two on this particular topic. Article 2, Section 14 of the Administrative Code says the following: "All inquiries made by citizens should be responded to if the information is available at the time, or a public response should be forthcoming at a future meeting of the council." So the relevant question is, is that really happening? The word on the street for many citizens is that they feel that they're not being listened to. They ask questions during citizens' comments, either directed at the council or the town manager, and rarely receive a follow-up. The reaction by some people is they say that they, we should go back to open town meetings so that people can have a direct dialogue with elected officials. From my perspective, this is not the solution, since open town meeting had its own set of issues, many of which have been improved upon by the council manager form that we are currently under now. So how are we going to ensure going forward that citizens who speak during public comments feel that they're being listened to? I have a suggestion. Years ago, when Tim Fitzgibbon was council president, he adopted a policy that helped with this issue. Citizens' questions that required follow-up were logged by the then-council clerk, Ian Homberg. They were then assigned to individual counselors or the town manager for a direct response back to the citizen. Not sure why this process stopped being followed, but it was effective during the time that it was being used. I recommend reinstituting this process, but taking it a step further by adding a new council agenda item called citizen feedback, where follow-up responses would be delivered publicly at each council meeting. So any questions, for example, tonight that would be addressed to the council, at the next meeting, there would be a response back to the citizens. I also suggest adding some additional steps to better structure the public comment period, which will let the public know that you really care. These might include announcing the policy at the beginning of each meeting, so people know they won't be getting answers to their questions or comments during that public comment period, or providing a handout on the policy, including an invitation to submit comments in written form. I'm sure you'll all agree that we need to foster an environment where citizens feel their voices are being heard. Citizens need to know that when they speak, their elected officials representing, representing them are listening intently and take an active interest in what is being said. At the same time, we do need to remember, however, that local government meetings like this one are held in public, but they're not meetings of the public. So achieving the right balance is critical to ensuring the future success of our local government. I look forward to your consideration of my suggestions. Thank you.
Is there anybody else who wishes to speak during citizens' open forum? Yes, ma'am.
Hello, my name is Jean G. Batista, 260 Lakeside Drive. And first of all, I just want to say I appreciate all the work that you guys are doing. I took a look at your agenda for tonight, and it's quite full, so I appreciate everything that is being done. I wanted to speak briefly on the possibility of setting up an environmental subcommittee at the town council level. According to mass.gov, which includes the Massachusetts Climate Change Report, and I think all of us have also seen this winter some of the events that have happened, and that's Massachusetts-wide, extreme weather related to, climate change is already causing catastrophic economic, social, and environmental losses in Massachusetts. Severe flooding, heat waves, and other extreme weather events in numerous parts of the state in 2023 caused tens of millions of dollars' worth of damages, including loss and damages to businesses, homes, property, crops. And I would like to add my own personal comment also to local infrastructure, including but not limited to downed power lines, road damage, and tree loss. I want to say at this point that I think the town responded really well to the extreme flooding that we had in this year's winter event. According to mass.gov, though, climate change impacts and losses are projected to intensify, and many disproportionately affect environmental justice and other priority communities. Inland flooding due to climate change is expected to cause 9.3 million in statewide damage annually by 2030, and by 2050, annual damages could total 64 million per year just in our state.
Recording in progress.
In 2050, Massachusetts can also expect 23 to 29 high-heat days per year. Keep in mind that 2030 is not too far away. As a town, I think we need to focus on goals such as the prevention of climate change by making smart, strategic decisions as it relates to the management of our current natural resources and our funding of our future projects. We need measurable, strategic goals to increase town resilience to climate change. We need to further enhance our communications with state and local agencies, which allow, which will allow Bridgewater to gain knowledge of projects and funding related to climate change impacts. We also need to study and work with others who are currently studying how climate change may impact the most vulnerable amongst us, including our most vulnerable communities, and how we can reduce or prevent those impacts. We also need the development of metrics on the progress of our town in addressing these issues, including practical goals and objectives. And we need enhanced communication with all town committees, employees, and the public to town-related climate change news, reports, and progress towards practical goals. Keep in mind, it doesn't matter where you live in Massachusetts. The fact of the matter is climate change is here to stay, and if we don't look at preventive measures, we could find ourselves in a situation we don't want to be in, and we could also find our children and family in those same situations. Therefore, I respectfully request the town of Bridgewater, at the town council level, consider establishing an environmental subcommittee focused on the above goals. Thank you for considering my recommendations or my request.
Is there anybody else this evening? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is John Savageo, 165 Pratttown Lane. I am here on behalf of the members of the VFW Post 2125 of Bridgewater. We, this is in regards to the VSO potential district. So on behalf of members of the VFW Post 2125, we initially supported the idea of Veteran Service District with Rainham, under the condition that it would be staffed in accordance with the Executive Office of Veteran Services staffing requirements. These requirements included a full-time agent, a part-time agent, and a full-time admin clerk solely dedicated to the department. However, the proposed staffing for the district only includes one full-time agent and one full-time admin, which is insufficient in the eyes of the members of Bridgewater VFW Post 2125. We strongly oppose the formation of the district with Rainham under these circumstances. While the proposed staffing would be an improvement compared to previous years, it falls short of what we believe our veterans deserve. We firmly believe that Bridgewater would be better served by having its own full-time dedicated service agent within the town. It is important to note that the motivation behind this proposed district seems to be primarily focused on the cost savings rather than better-serving veterans. The amount of savings achieved through this district would only be a small fraction of the entire town budget. Additionally, it has come to our attention that a waiver was requested for the staffing levels. If the main objective was to enhance the support provided to our veterans, there would be no need, there would be no need for such a waiver, and the district would be fully staffed as per the E O V S staffing requirements. The veterans of Bridgewater deserve better. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. Janet Hanson, Pleasant Street, Bridgewater. I'm going to be commenting on the zoning ordinance that's up. I just want to just say, just because we have a city form of government doesn't mean we have to look like a city or feel like a city. We just still need to keep, keep in mind, try to keep that small-town atmosphere that we all have loved and people have come to Bridgewater for. We don't need six stories, I'm going to harp on that. We don't need six-story maximum height. That's way too tall, and I don't think Campus Plaza should be mixed-use. It should stay strictly business. I know there's talk about Perkins area being mixed-use, other areas, but I still feel that that should be just business. Four stories should be the max, though I have to admit I'd like less, but four stories should be the max. And I know people said that they don't have to build it six stories high, but if you put it in there, they're going to want to build it. Somebody would want to build a six-story. I think that's too high for that area. There's also talk about the roof access doesn't affect the height, can be higher than the six stories or four stories or whatever it is, but I don't see anywhere in the ordinance of how big that can be. Is there a restriction on the roof access? Also, this is to make it easier for developers to be able to build without a lot of red tape, but my concern is I don't see what the checks and balances are of this and how the residents of the town can still have input, input on this. I know they're supposed to check off all the boxes, and if they meet that, then they're supposed to get the green light, but there's got to be some restrictions there, and I haven't seen it. And I just concern, you know, about the height. I don't still understand how the state can expect the town to change everything to comply. And I, the other thing is, is I haven't heard who's paying for that. Who's paying for that train station to be moved? I certainly don't want to be paying for it. I can't afford to be paying any more taxes than we already have. And if we do all this change, how is that going to affect our taxes? Are we going to see lower taxes? Have we seen more income into the, in the town because of it? You know, I don't know. You know, there's a lot of things that are, I don't like, but the main thing is, if I'm going to harp on anything, is not the height. Don't make it six stories. I'm concerned about that. I'm concerned about the cost to the town and, you know, and if citizens are going to have an input on what's going to be going into those areas, is there any way that we can have input? And on the school budget, they should not get an increase until they show how an increase will increase the productivity of a student or increase, I don't know the word I want, but they need to show that giving more money is going to give better results, and please don't let them take away music and art. So those are my concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak during citizens' open forum this evening? Anybody else? Seeing none, we will move on to appointments, where we do not have any appointments tonight under F hearings. If I could refer to the town manager on this one, this is listed under hearings, but it's not a hearing. It's, should be under legislation for action. Should I request a motion to go to legislation for action and put that under, or should I just take it up now?
I think you can request a motion and go from there.
Okay. So entertain a motion that we go to item L, legislation for action, but include, include the zoning ordinance as the first item on that, and then we'll continue with the other legislative for action.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so we are going to go to legislative for action, and we will go to a proposed zoning amendment ordinance, FY 24-004, Central Business District Inform Base Code. Again, this is not a public hearing. I guess I recognize Mr. Rulee for a presentation or?
Mr. President.
Since then, the only question I have, and this may be directed to, just for clarification, both the sponsor and co-sponsors are not here tonight. Is that, is it okay to continue with this?
Yeah, because it's not really on for a vote. I think the next step would be to vote it to advertising.
Okay.
So I think you're okay to vote it to advertising. I think the final vote, the sponsor should be here.
Sure.
But I think just for an administrative task of voting to advertise, I think you're okay.
Okay. I'll, is there, is there a presentation tonight, or are we just voting to go to advertising?
Yeah, you're voting to advertise, and we've consolidated all of the comments that we received from the planning board, from the C E committee, as well as our consultant has reviewed this to make sure we're complying to the MBTA communities' legislation.
Okay.
If we had sent you the marked-up red line, we would have run out of ready in terms of all the changes that we've made. So the document that you got in your packet is the final document that incorporates those changes that were allowed to include as part of the MBTA communities' legislation compliance.
Okay. So we certainly can discuss this tonight if we want to, but this is really just being referred to advertising, where it'll come back at our March 12th meeting, which is our next meeting for a final vote. Does anybody have any questions? Counsel Lindy.
Not a question, it's a motion to refer to advertising.
Okay, there's a motion to refer to advertising.
Right, sir.
And there's a second. Any discussion on the motion? Counsel Perry.
Thank you. If we could, just maybe a few quick, brief summaries of some of the changes that were made, if Mr. Rulee could comment that were, that came from the committees, just to highlight the major changes that might be.
Yeah, I don't think there was major changes. I think there was clarification in terms of there are two districts within the Central Business District, CBDS, which is the central square area, CBDR, which are, is that area which includes Campus Plaza, Perkins, where we anticipate development. Clarification of that, we delineate within the document what can be built in those various areas by distinguishing what frontage zones are. We've added that map to the document. We've added a map which shows the districts, and we've added the checklist as part of the document. The other significant change was that initially we had called for a technical review committee. It was determined that any committee had to be made up of town residents, and that was not going to happen in terms of the technical review. So we've now referred to it as compliance review. The checklist is comprehensive. I guess the best example would be no different than if the building official was to issue a building permit. And if all of the checklist items had been completed, he then would issue the building permit. The zoning ordinance is written in such a way that it's very tight in terms of if you're looking for that compliance review, all the boxes, appropriate boxes, need to be checked. If a developer or property owner did not want to follow the Form Base Code, they still have the opportunity to go the normal approach.
Thank you. Any, anybody else have any questions? This is being, again, this is being referred to advertising tonight for a final vote on March 12th. So we have a motion and we have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So this has been referred to advertising.
Thank you.
We'll, we'll continue with legislation for action. Order FY 24-018, Establish of Town Manager Goals. This was sent to the Strategic Planning, and they voted two to zero to recommend, which they did at their February 12th meeting. Anybody want to comment on that? Counsel Perry.
I could. So yeah, with that committee I was a part of, we basically went through, let's get the paperwork here, it's toward the end, some updating, updating of town manager's goals for the upcoming fiscal year. I think we had a majority of what was discussed and that already kind of put in front of us. We just made a few updates and changes, just having to do more with downtown revitalization and what else have we talked about there? Let's see. Again, what we have in front of us is basically what we reviewed, not a whole lot of changes compared to what the prior goals were. We just made them relative to the current fiscal year, including hopefully getting the fire station up and running and further, you know, work on downtown revitalization. Anyone has any specific questions on any item, I'd be happy to answer.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions regarding the town manager goals that have been recommended by the Strategic Planning Committee? You see that in your packet? Oh, Counsel Lindy.
Not a question specifically on this, but I, the email that we got had the vote been through the 28th, unless I'm mistaken.
I think that was his, I think that was the review. I think the review is, we're currently reviewing, evaluating the town manager. So those do, those are due by April, February 28th.
Yes. Yeah, we were, looked for feedback from any counselors before our prior meeting to incorporate that into what you have here today.
So this is on our agenda for action. So we're going to take a vote to establish the town manager goals, based on what's submitted in this packet.
Motion for approval?
There's a, there's a motion to approve and there's a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Here you go, Mike. He gets busy stuff to do here. Next item, Order FY 24-025, The Acceptance of the Energy Aggregation Plan. This measure was not referred to any committee. 14 days have a lap, have passed, therefore, this may be finally considered this evening. And you have that in your package. We've talked about this, it was introduced a few months ago. Did you want to comment, Mr. Dutton?
I would only comment to the extent that this is a standard plan, which goes to the Department of Public Utilities for approval, and the Department of Public, just so everybody is aware, Department of Public Utilities can take up to three years, in the two-year range right now, for approval of aggregation plans. The plan itself does not dictate exactly what electric rates will be for consumers and residents, but, but is just merely the framework which we use to get through a procurement process to achieve the best rates that we can. So it's, it's fairly standard, fairly standard aggregation plan, and as I say, once it's approved by the council, it goes to the Department of Public Utilities for approval.
Okay. And any other questions? I'll entertain a motion to accept.
Second.
There's a motion, there's a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? We have adopted an energy aggregation plan. Next item, Order FY 24-026, The Acceptance of Non-Recurring Revenue, which will be sent to the capital, capital account. The Budget and Finance Committee met tonight, and we voted two to zero to recommend this to the council, and the Finance Committee voted six to zero to recommend this at their February 12th meeting. And again, that's in your, in your packet as well. It's a $263,404.55 for prison mitigation monies as the state earmarks for Bridgewater as a host community, and that'll go into our capital operating budget. Any, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
There's a motion, there's a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, put that in capital. And last item is petition FY, petition 2024-015, The 2024 Presidential Primary Warrant, which you have in your packet, and I actually have a sheet here. Once we approve it, everybody needs to sign it. On March 5th is the presidential primary here in the town of Bridgewater and throughout the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and which is what we do normally, we vote for all warrants that go before the citizens for a vote.
Motion to approve?
There's a motion and there's a second to approve the warrant. Any discussion on the warrant? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So we'll, that'll go around, everybody needs to sign it, and then we'll hand it back to our council clerk. That ends legislation for action. We will now go back to item G, Licensed Transactions, which we have none. Presentations, we have none, and we'll go to the town manager's report. Item A is Vernon Street Well Update.
Thank you, Mr. President. Vernon Street Wells, as the council knows, the, there are wells that do exist off of Vernon Street that are, were drilled and tested a little over 10 years ago for future water supply. The commissioning of the new well or wells and a treatment facility to treat approximately half a million gallons per day from those Vernon Street sources is tentatively included in Phase 2 of our comprehensive waste, sorry, comprehensive water strategy, and that Phase 2 would be in the time period, the four-year period between 2026 and 2030 is where that tentatively lies. We are in the process of permitting with Mass DEP. We are in the early stages of design and engineering, and eventually we'll be in the early stages of design for the new treatment plant. The projected cost in 2024 would be just shy of $39 million for, for that additional capacity and that additional treatment plant. So not an insignificant expense, but, but honestly, obviously, we would be looking for state revolving funds to do that, as well as an offset from some state grant funding. And right now, we're continuing to work with the engineering firm to get our proposed work plan approved and permitted, flow tests completed, and the water in the test wells retested to confirm the testing that was done about 10 years ago. So that is where we stand on the Vernon Street Wells, but happy to answer any questions.
Any questions to the town manager on the Vernon Street Well Update? Seeing none. Thank you. We'll move on to item B, Commenting During Public Comments Update. Do you have any comments?
Agreed that it's a slightly awkward agenda item, but... Agreed that it's a slightly awkward agenda item, but what we are trying to do is make sure that all of our boards and committees are streamlining their work and making decisions that will withstand legal challenges. So when you sit in my seat, that's, you know, a good chunk of your day is spent making sure that whatever is decided by citizen boards can withstand a challenge. And this includes the process by which committees make decisions. And honestly, this means being a little more diligent about following the process in the volunteer handbook, also following the processes laid out in Robert's Rules, which we follow a modified version of for all of our meeting protocols, including the council. How public comment should work and what we're moving towards is multifold. So public comment period is open to anyone wishing to make a comment. Public comment periods are not required, but we encourage our committees to put one on their agendas. There are two by council rules, there are two on your agenda, one at the beginning of the meeting, one at the end of the meeting. If there is a public hearing on the agenda, that is specifically for public comment on that particular hearing item, that particular project, or that particular hearing item. So commenting on the project during a different time period, during a public comment period is really not appropriate. And that's a hard, I think that's a hard thing conceptually to understand, but from a protection, in order to protect the town from any of those legal challenges, it really, we're trying to force public comment, or comments on a particular project from the public into that public hearing time period. If the hearing has been closed, using a public comment period to comment on a project that's under deliberation is also inappropriate and could also provide grounds for a legal challenge. That's why public hearings really are very, very important, and we want to make sure that all of our residents understand that they have an opportunity to be heard in front of a board or committee, especially land use boards and committees, and that opportunity is always at the public comment, or sorry, at the public hearing, during the public hearing process. And so that's very important, and can't really drive that home enough. So when a hearing is closed and the deliberations begin, committees themselves should really not entertain outside comments about the project until they've come to a decision and voted on that decision. And in some cases, boards or committees will not put a public comment period on the agenda specifically because the only item on their agenda is deliberating on a project or an issue. And so often, you won't see a public comment period, and that is why. Admittedly, a lot of our efforts, as the town attorney knows, a lot of our efforts are, as I said, to protect the town from legal challenges, protect the decisions that the citizen boards make, and that means making sure that all the boards are educated about how to run the meeting, how to run a hearing, a public hearing, and making sure that the deliberation process is as free from other influences as possible. So we do have work to do to educate folks, board and committee members, as well as residents as to when and how, the appropriate time to really make comments. And comments can be forceful, comments can be, you know, in opposition to something or in favor of something. We don't, we don't try to govern what the comments are, we don't, I was going to say we don't care, but we do care. We care about people having a hearing, having the forum for a hearing, and so we are sensitive to that. So I think as we move forward, we'll make sure that folks get a much better idea of how meetings will be structured, and boards and committees themselves will have a much better idea of the kind of comments that they should be soliciting and when they should be soliciting those comments. So that's a little bit of an update. Obviously, there's more to come. After the April election, I fully anticipate we'll be engaging all the boards and committees on a, you know, a little primer on how to do it right, and make sure that, you know, they're protected and the committee is protected. But happy to answer any questions.
Counsel Lindy?
Okay. To you to the town manager, so you just anticipated my question about after the April election, because what happened in a previous community that I lived in is the mayor convened all of the chairs of all the committees in one place, and brought in the training, and then brought in the AG's office for other issues as well. So that's good that you're going to do that. Are public comments open after a hearing for any period of time? Like if someone can't come to a meeting to do their public comments, will they be able to submit written comments?
That's a great question. So often, committees will close a public hearing, but to keep a written record open. But they, in order to accept those written comments, then they would have to do that. And that's something else we'll certainly be teaching chairs or all the boards and committee folks, you know, how to do that. If the hearing is closed and there's no further written comment, then there is no additional comment.
Thank you.
Counselor Chase?
Thank you, Mr. President. So if I may please, through you to the town manager, just for clarification, many of our boards and committees, certainly committees of the council, do transact business that does not require a public hearing per se. And so just to clarify my understanding, that in that case, if there is no prescribed required public hearing, it is optional, I think, as you indicated, as to whether there is a public comment period in that meeting or not. And if it is chosen to have a public comment period, which is not a hearing, comments can be received from the public, but should not be directed toward any agenda item on the, before that meeting? Is that correct?
I think if you have, if you do not have a public hearing on your agenda, and you do have a public comment period, then that public comment period, we like to hope that citizens and residents will comment on something that's in front of the board, but they can comment about anything, quite honestly.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I would just say one caveat to that is you just can't engage as the board in a discussion about an issue brought forth by a citizen in public comment that hasn't been posted. It's an open meeting law violation.
So the comments can be received, but there's no dialogue? There's no...
Which is why, to clarify for the public, this is really important to understand. Despite what it kind of alludes to in your procedures as the town council, the reason we do not think it prudent, nor do you engage in dialogue with citizens during citizen open forum, is because the matters in which are being discussed have not been properly noticed. And so it actually creates a more transparent process to do it the way we do it. While I understand citizens feel awkward making their comment and not having a dialogue, the reason for that is if it's a discussion of an issue that is going to come before you, then the public as a whole is entitled to notice that you will be having that discussion because it's something you will be deliberating. So it is actually making the process more transparent, while I can completely understand a citizen feeling like they're not being addressed. It's actually the opposite. We can't address the citizen, or you shouldn't address the citizen, because that issue that they want to talk about should be on a publicly posted agenda, so that as many people as possible can come and discuss it or hear you discuss it.
Right. Thank you.
Anybody else? I just wanted, just to chime in a little bit on this, I think it's important, perhaps going forward, obviously, I would like to keep, always keep this on the agenda for the public to come in and let them, you know, tell us what their concerns are. But I think it, probably going forward, it should be something that we remind them every meeting, that, you know, we encourage this, but don't expect an engagement from us at this time. So maybe that's something we should put on there, just to remind them, hey, we want to hear what you have to say, but don't stop and say, what do you think? Because we can't engage you. So that's just a reminder. But thank you. Okay, next item, we have Legion Field Update.
So this will be the shortest report. Damage has been repaired, and just as by way of explanation, we were awaiting the insurance company's review and assessment of the damage that was done. I think it was a telephone pole or a tree on the fence. It's all fixed, as far as I'm told, and we have gotten insurance, an insurance payment to offset the cost for pair. So it's as short as I could make it.
Counselor McKinnon?
It was good to see that week after it got taken care of, but it's great for the kids, Legion Field, but is there a reason why we don't do any events there? We have that gazebo, the Fourth of July is town funded, I mean, citizens funded. Why don't we use Legion Field?
It's, we use it, yeah, Fourth of July, and I think, you know, if somebody wanted to do a community event there, they're welcome to, there's an application process.
I think the town should do something for the Fourth of July committee there every year, to make that burden a little easier, because the prices do keep getting higher and higher on the fireworks. And, I mean, just like Spring Street, what we're trying to do down there is community build, and that's what these events do, is community build. And just a recommendation, just for some, maybe some ideas down the road. Thank you.
Good point.
Anything else on Legion Field? Next item is Historical Commission Delay Demolition Meeting Update.
I think this one's pretty short, too. I think there was some issue, technology issue, with a recent meeting, and to the extent that there was a hearing involving a demolition delay, then that will have to be reheard. But that's, my understanding is that there was some sort of technical difficulty, and it just, people were sitting in a waiting room, waiting to get into the meeting, and it didn't happen. So, but that, yeah, that would be reheard.
Counselor McKinnon?
Is there a date for that new meeting?
I am not aware of that. I can find out, sir.
Thank you.
And I'll circu, if, once I find out, I'll circulate that.
Thank you.
Anything else on the historical commission? Okay, that ends the town manager's report. Mike, could I, oh, wait, yeah, could I just add for next meeting, Deb, to give us an update on the Vets Agent hiring and the district process, the district progress as to where you are with that process?
Totally, yep.
And Counsel McKinnon?
Can I just like to ask for the whole physical year last year, the money for municipal parking or whatever the parking is behind the fire station? I want to know what we made, if it's even worth keeping, paid parking, if we should use it for...
Yep, I can give you a report on FY 24's, 23's revenue, and year-to-date 24, too.
All right, thank you.
Does anybody else have any requests for the next meeting for the town manager's report? If not, you can always contact, go ahead, Counsel.
Just one question, that had to do with the historical commission. What kind of support, I'm trying to find out what kind of support that the different boards and commissions have for technical capability, okay? I know some of them have a town-assigned person like Josh, like the school building committee, but I don't think that committee does, and maybe that might solve issues, I don't know.
And you've heard me explain this before, but that is one of the issues that we have with all our boards and committees, and one of the roadblocks to trying to create hybrid is making sure that we've got people that can, if not quote-unquote "staff committees", at least run the technology appropriately. So, but, yeah, that's one of our challenges.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to discussions. Item J, Discussions. A, we have Fire Station OPM Update. I'll refer to the town manager on this.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have with us Joe Sullivan, who's our, works for our Owners Project Management Team, and Joe will give you a little bit of an update on the fire station. After he's done, I'll give you a little update on the finances, and I will share my screen.
My screen's not working.
Well, I'll share it with myself. Sorry, Joe. Here, do you want to see what it would look like? I'll, so I don't, I shouldn't even bother sharing it, Deb? Okay.
I'll give you a verbal update, how's that sound? I'm Joe Sullivan, I'm with CHA, we're your owners' project manager. A few months ago, I came in front of the council, just to give an update of where we were prior to going out to bid, and we were hopeful that we were going to get successful bids and be able to provide a building that Bridgewater will be proud of. I can tell you, today, we did receive successful bids. M. O'Connor out of Roxbury will be doing the construction for the new fire station. We're currently working with M. O'Connor, finalizing contract, and I've set in place currently, for those who haven't seen it...
Yeah, because it's attached to a cord.
I'm not going to pick it up. So the red unit of the building, it's going to be a building Bridgewater's going to be proud of for the next 50 years. You know, I grew up in it, I've been in it, and, you know, seeing the station and how deplorable it is, based on, you know, what they do and what they do for the town, I am so excited to see this building eventually get done and occupied for your firefighters and your emergency responders. A few things that we're going to be working with, just having the training facility within, a training room within that facility to allow the guys to train onsite. A lot of towns host training, and they get to train their men for free, where they would normally send those individuals out to other towns to be trained. It's just going to be a win-win overall for the town of Bridgewater. The other part of it is that we're, I've already contacted all the Butters, we're going to be having a Butters meeting tomorrow night, and I'm big on transparency, I want to make sure that everybody's aware of the steps, the schedule, the sequence, and the construction that'll occur. You know, with everything, there's always going to be a little bit of disruption, but at the end of the day, the final outcome is going to be something the whole town will be proud of. We'll be providing contact information for those Butters, as well as numbers for us to reach out at any time if there's any concerns as we move through that process. Financially, you're not going to be able to put anything up to show, I dig it.
That's true. You'll have to listen to me talk about financials.
Do you have any questions at all?
Does anybody have any questions, Mr. Sullivan?
Just a quick question, then, so when do we anticipate possibly starting to clear some land and see some action?
Magic question. So, check, I know, currently, it takes about probably 25 to 30 days to get a contract in place. I'm hopeful and excited to see them mobilize sometime in March. We are going to have to do a little bit of wetland delineation and reconfiguration. The neighbor next door has graciously allowed us access onto the site without having to cross the wetlands, just to get the mobilization going, so we're hopeful, you know, third week till the end of March.
Sounds good, thank you.
Anyone else, Mr. Chase?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wonder, Mr. Dutton, could you arrange to circulate to the council members the financials, so that we could view those in our leisure?
Absolutely. I'll share what's short PowerPoint, as well as the spreadsheet with the financials.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Sullivan? Thank you for the update.
You're welcome. We're excited.
Looking forward to it. It's been a long time coming.
Yeah, you bet. Thank you.
I see one comment.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. McKinnon?
For Dutton. Mike, maybe, I don't know who does town Facebook, but maybe put all that on there, too, since the residents couldn't see that today.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Absolutely. Get it up momentarily.
Is there, is there more with this? Are we moving on to?
I will, I'll give you, I'll give you the very condensed version of the financials. So Joe mentioned the, mentioned the project. I think I had reported to you at a previous meeting that we were short by several million dollars. And what we've done is allocate, excuse me, allocate a certain amount of money to Station Two. We told taxpayers that we would do Station Two and the new station when they voted the appropriation and the bond authorization. So what we have done is included Station Two. We have a, let me just get to it, we have a total appropriation of 23 million. We have an outstanding balance, unfunded balance of $4.9 million. We have applied for county ARPA funding for that $4.9 million shortfall, and I'm fairly confident that we will get that funding through the county. And that will give us the ability to complete improvements to Station Two, and also complete the brand-new station as the voters had a... station as, as the voters had expected. So, so that is in the works and as I say, I will circulate this momentarily to all the councilors just so you, you see it and have it.
Counselor Perry?
Yeah, and to you, to the Town Manager, and again, this, this four-point-nine million came from unexpected increase in soft costs, I believe?
Actually, it came from increase in, in hard costs, in construction costs.
Oh, more hard costs, okay.
The, the soft costs have been fairly consistent throughout the project. This, as, as Joe sort of alluded to, came just as a result of the rapid escalation of building costs between early 2020 and today. So, we actually, and I may have mentioned this at a prior meeting, we're actually pleased that the, that the low bid came in from a very good quality general contractor and also very pleased that it came in under the most recent cost estimate. It did not, clearly did not come in under our appropriation which was based on a cost estimate that was done back in late 2019. So, so you can see, if nothing else, this project shows you the rapid escalation of building costs that have occurred over the last couple of years, so, yeah, so that's...
Thank you very much.
Any other questions? One question I have, Mike, the, the park, the money that's been earmarked for the park behind it, that, is that, that will probably be completed once the fire station is completed?
Correct.
So, it doesn't, that won't interfere with, so it won't interfere with the construction?
No, that'll, that'll be addressed after the station is built and is part of the final, final work on the project. That, that particular piece is actually funded separately.
Sure.
So, that's good, that's a good thing.
In the design intent that we did for that fire station also included the allowing of access.
Thank you. Anything else on that? We'll move on to B, National Grid Storm Update. Is, is Joseph Cardinal is here to talk about that?
And I will introduce Joe Cardinal, who we invited to come to a council meeting. He graciously, graciously accepted our invitation and he's just here to talk a little bit about storm recovery and what goes on at National Grid when we have a storm.
Thank you, Michael. Good evening, council members. Thank you for inviting me here tonight. As Michael mentioned, my name is Joe Cardinal. I'm a Community and Customer Manager for National Grid and I also am the Communication Lead for the South Shore during storm events. I thought for tonight, I would give you a little background info on how we handle storm events on the South Shore and then open it up for questions. To start, we basically do what everyone else does. We rely on the weather reports to determine our storm response. We also have our own weather service that keeps us updated on the ever-changing weather forecasts. Once we know, excuse me, once we know there is a storm coming, typically two to three days out before the storm, we activate our Internal Incident Command System. And now everyone internally has a job or responsibility that typically takes them away from their regular job until the storm is over and all customers are restored. Once the incident commander, who is the VP of Operations, is comfortable with an incident type for the storm, it is announced and notifications begin going out to cities and towns. And that notification is critical for preparing for the possibility of outages. So, a little explanation on the incident typing is we have basically five, five incidents that we determine and we're going to categorize every storm into one of these incidents. I'll take one, Type Three. We, actually, the storm on January ninth that we had was considered a Type Three event. So, we're anticipating customers could be out up to seventy-two hours, ten percent of our customers could be interrupted and this is what we're going to bring in for outside crews. We're going to bring in a hundred and fifty line crews, we're going to bring in a hundred forestry crews, we're going to bring in damage assessment crews and we're going to bring in wire downs. So, as we prepare for that storm, this notification goes out by email to all the cities and towns on the South Shore. In Bridgewater, it goes to the Town Manager's Office, the Police Chief and the Fire Chief, again, by, by email. And we continue these emails throughout the entire event. So, that notification also triggers an internal response to bringing in these outside contractors and internal groups. We activate all our line crews, internal and external, where we, we do make outreach as far away as Canada for certain storms to bring crews in to help us. We activate tree crews, same thing, we're calling around for, for the tree crews, wire down workers, cut and clear workers, damage assessment, and we're bringing all these groups into Brockton to our office on East Ashland Street along with dispatch responsibilities and the activation of my communications team. So, the communication team consists of twenty-two liaisons, one liaison for every town on the South Shore. And I also have a municipal room staff that is staff twenty-four-seven. My liaison reaches out to the chief, the fire chief in the town and lets them know before the event starts that they will be their contact for the event and all the priorities that the fire chief has will go to our liaison and then it will come into our municipal room and then it will go into our storm room to be dispatched. And then the community room, which is open twenty-four-seven in the overnight hours, will be taking calls from police and fire dispatch just to check on the priorities that have already been submitted for the day. So, basically, everyone is now in place and ready to go once the storm hits and when it hits, we deploy all our resources into zones. We have five zones on the South Shore. Bridgewater is in Zone Three in blue here with Whitman, Hanson, East Bridgewater and Halifax. We keep line crews, tree crews, damage assessment, wires down in these zones to cut down on windshield time and also quicker deploying to issues. We also have our dispatch and municipal room in Brockton broken down into the same zones so to keep everything uniform. So, basically, if you were looking in our Brockton office, in one corner of the building, you would see the, consider the storm room and there would be basically five pods and there'd be three or four people and those three or four people would dispatch just to that zone. So, we don't mix things up and splitting people up into different areas. And then my municipal room has a person for each zone and they're taking those calls in during the event. So, now, we're into a storm and it's a Type Three event. The first day of the storm, unfortunately, very little restoration happens. Bucket trucks are not supposed to be up flying above thirty-five miles an hour. The buckets are just not safe to have a person in them up at forty feet in the air above thirty-five miles an hour, so very little restoration happens on that first day. So, what we do in working along with the fire chiefs, it's considered a public safety day. We're getting a list of priorities from your fire chief for where the priorities are, where are the wires down, where is the police and fire apparatus standing by, where are the roads blocked? So, we can, we get out and try to cover all of those things so we can release your apparatus so that you can bring it back for what you need it for. A lot of times we won't, obviously, we can't re-energize and there might be a wire still hanging there, so we'll, we'll leave a wire down person on that wire until we can get a crew out there. We're trying to make everything safe as, as quickly as possible while we have that first day, basically while we're doing very little restoration. So, once that is complete and we get another set of priorities from cities and towns and from the, from the fire chief, it's basically his restoration priorities. And now we begin that phase of the storm response and that continues until everyone is restored. Also during these multiple-day events, not only is my liaison in constant contact with the fire chief, but we will also hold daily calls with the fire chiefs, with the director of my group and the director of operations and basically we're going over the big picture of the damage, you know, do we have transmission issues? Do we have substation issues? Do we have multiple feeders out? So, we're giving them the big picture with our, with our VP, I'm sorry, our Director of Operations so that they know what we're looking at out there in the field. So, so in closing, it's also important to note that what you just heard, we talked a little bit about the communication with the fire chief, the priorities that, that he gives to us, the zone approach, the Incident Command System, was all put together with the input of the Plymouth County Fire Chiefs back in 2012 and one of your, your past fire chief here in Bridgewater, George Rogers, was instrumental in being involved in that and now he actually works for, for us in our Emergency Planning Department. But as always, we're, we're constantly looking for ways to improve and always welcome input. So, thanks for letting me do my presentation and now I'll open it up to questions.
Counselor Lindy?
Thank you for coming here. I asked for you to come here, so I appreciate it. Is there any way we could get what you outlined in presentation form?
Sure.
To us, the maps and everything?
Yep.
So, my question is more, does the city and town have to initiate being in touch with you if there's a problem and then what happens if, like, I know, I know, I noticed that the library had power on one side of the street and the town hall, I don't know if we had power, but I know everybody went home earlier that day. So, if you don't have power and you're sending out emails, should I be assuming that there's generators or other things that are maintaining, you know? And, and how is Bridgewater broken up? Are there quadrants within the town where there are certain areas? I live on the...
Well, Bridgewater, Bridgewater has a transmission substation off of Pleasant Street down by the...
Right.
Home Depot.
Yep.
So, that transmission substation brings in high, high tension voltage and that serves a lot of other substations on the South Shore. There's one distribution substation in Bridgewater, the Mill Street Sub that Mr. Dutton actually got a tour of when, when he was first hired here at Bridgewater, we brought him in there to take a look at that. And there are multiple feeders that we call them that come out of that substation that serve a good majority of Bridgewater. That sub also serves East Bridgewater, some of West Bridgewater, some of Halifax. Bridgewater has also served a little bit from a sub in East Bridgewater on Spring Street that's, that's hidden in, in the woods. So, there are a lot of different feeders that serve this area and we've been very active in the last couple of years, we call it a flizer approach and it's a flizer scheme. So, if a feeder locks out, we can quickly re-energize the back end of the feeder with, with this flizer scheme. So, that's why you might see up to a certain point, power's restored and another area, the power isn't restored because that's obviously where the damage is. So, that's...
So, would be appropriate, like, I live on one side of eighteen, the other side of eighteen near the water tower, there was a light that literally never went out during that thirty-six hour outage. I'm glad to hear that, it was projected at seventy-two, but it was at thirty-six, but when you're in day two, I'm just wondering, like, are there sections of Bridgewater specifically that would be energized before? Like, I lived in Brockton before and the downtown area was the Central Fire District and that was where the City Hall was, the Fire Department was, the police station was and that was always like priority one and the further you got out, the harder it was to get the service back. I lived on the East and Stoughton Line over there. I'm just wondering, I live on the East Bridgewater, Bridgewater Line right off of eighteen, so it seemed that, and I, you know, they know I'm a counselor in my condo complex, so they all came and asked me and I didn't know really what to tell them about the restoration. I understand the bucket trucks over thirty-five miles an hour, that makes total complete sense to me. When you're in like day two and a half, that's when people start getting antsy and they want to know more. So, I just wanted to know how to respond to them, not that I could, this wasn't charged, I don't have a landline anymore and, you know, it, in terms of the communication, you, you can't even get your update if you don't have a charged phone to get that restoration information. So, how does it get communicated?
So, the best way to get communication during the storm is probably talking to the, to the fire chief because he's talking with us all the time.
Okay.
He has constant contact with my liaison who has constant contact with us in the office. So, we're funneling information to him or her all day long, okay? We've got this many customers out in Bridgewater, there is a feeder locked out that has four or five poles down on it, three of the poles are in the, in the right of way in the woods, so that's going to be a long time before we can get to that. And I'm just sort of making things up as I'm talking. It's going to take us a long time to get to that. So, that information goes from our office to the liaison, to the fire chief. So, he does have that and if he doesn't have that, they can certainly get it that way. That liaison will get back in touch with me in the office and then I can get the information and, and Mr. Dutton has in pass called if, if he needs information and he can get that for me.
Okay, so, I wouldn't want to call the fire chief individually as one of nine councilors. I'd rather go through, the, the fire chief reports to the Town Manager, so I would be best to talk to the Town Manager. I had a question in there someplace, but it, it just escaped me, so if it comes back, I'll, I'll ask you.
And I guess to expand a little bit, every storm is different.
Right.
All the damages can be different. Last week, we were anticipating a major storm, we were preparing for a major storm and, and nothing happened.
Right.
It depends on, on, on the weather too, but we have Type Four weather events where we, and we have those a lot where we figure up to twenty-four hours of outages. So, we're, I mean, you have to say that we're guessing sometimes too.
Just like the weather forecasters.
Exactly, yeah, and it, because they're guessing, right?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions for, yes?
I was just wondering if you could talk a little bit about, I think the, the tool that you have regarding text messages to customers is particularly important for those of us that do have recharge. And it seems like there's a lot of inconsistencies with those messages. I know for me, for example, the last outing we had, we got a message to our phones six, seven hours after the power had been restored that our power was still being worked on. So, just curious to know where that information comes from, how does that flow of communication work?
Flow of communication unfortunately isn't the best. We have a, we have an internal system that the last event wasn't working right, so we were flooding people with outage notification messages. We have a lot of different people that get an outage notification, town officials, they get it, police chief gets a fire chief TPW, they get those notifications and we're flooding them with information because the system wasn't working correctly. Basically, you're not supposed to, obviously, it was, it was mixed up and that was causing these notifications to go out and we knew it wasn't, internally, we knew it wasn't true working in the Brockton office, but they weren't coming out of the Brockton office, they were coming out of the system. And unfortunately, it was, it was incorrect and we were getting a lot of calls on there, a lot of upset people and it was the other way too, people were getting the calls, you know, that they, they didn't have power when they did and did have power when they, and they didn't. So, it was, it was very confusing. But typically, that's not supposed to happen. We do a lot of major events where we know the customers have been out for a couple of days, after power is restored, we do do some outreach, sporadic outreach to try to check to make sure they still have power because the system isn't perfect. We've had times where we'll restore a main line and when I say a main line, say Route Eighteen Bedford Street, we'll, we'll restore Bedford Street and then the communication will go out at all of the side streets that were off of it were restored. And a lot of the streets had fuses parked because they had a separate issue on their street which didn't get into the system. So, we were sending out notifications that they were restored and they weren't, so it's, unfortunately, it's something that we have to work on with our system to, to be better. The system isn't as automatic as you like it to be or, or want it to be. We actually rely on customers calling in and telling us there's an outage. I get a lot of calls from customers saying they're without power before, before we know about it. So, there's not, this flizer scheme that I talked about is the way that we're trying to get into the twenty-first century. We're not, we're not fully there yet, so a lot of it is based on, if you have an outage, you call in. The neighborhood that I live in, in East Bridgewater, I can guarantee you, nobody calls in because they think I, that I know and, and they don't. We want everybody to, to call in. If I'm, if I'm at work, I don't even know. We want everybody to call in that has an outage, so that's how we, that's how we can, we can sort of drill down to where that outage is.
I would just say for you, not you directly, but for a company that has stature, communication should be a number-one priority and I feel like that's a good avenue that could work well if designed to do so, if it carries out correctly, so I would just emphasize that because I know, you know, people, elderly neighbors, family members, young children, some of them rely on that information that says your power may not be restored for seventy-two hours, that they need to seek an alternative location. So, I would just emphasize that I think that's crucial to customers of National Grid to get that right.
So, we, so before a storm... So, we, so before a storm, we talk about the type III, the type IV event that we're getting out to the cities and towns. For any customer in the town that is on our critical list, if they have life-saving electrical equipment that they have in their house, they should be on our critical list. They will get a phone call before a storm event, letting them know that we're anticipating a type III weather event, and you really need to make preparations for the fact that you could be without power for up to 72 hours.
Yeah.
So, and I recommend that to anybody that has any type of family member that has an issue in their house, to call our customer service and get on that list.
And there's just a number on the website that folks can call and get on that list?
Got the Customer Service Line. Yep.
Do want to echo his comments on the communication. And I do want to bring up that last storm in January. It was a mess in Bridgewater and not as bad in other towns. And yeah, the winds stuck around for a while, but you guys did do the best you could, and I do appreciate that. But now, a little criticism. When it came to a fire in town, I ironically got stuck there the whole time, driving by, pulled in, talked to a business owner, and all the hoses got put out, so I couldn't leave the parking lot. I'm not going to go through my notes right now, but I have all the times of when everything happened. Forty minutes of live wires down on the ground is a little unacceptable. Every news reporter was there before National Grid was there, and, I mean, half the Fire Department, I consider close friends of mine, and they were fighting over live wires in a very bad commercial fire. And all I ask is just to try to speed things up like that, because like I said, there's no reason that the news should have beat National Grid with you guys right in Brockton and all around the area. Like I said, no, that's all due respect saying that. I just wanted to get that out, because I did email you guys and got nothing back. I wasn't getting mouthy or anything, being rude when I messaged you, but that was, I didn't want to get stuck there, but I got stuck there and watching those live wires down, and then the firefighters continuing to fight that fire for 40 minutes kind of upset me.
So, was that the event on Route 18?
Yeah.
And I did talk to the Chief on that.
Yeah.
He did call me about that, about that response and the response time on that. So, basically, when we get a call that a Priority One is happening and a Priority One is, would be a life-threatening event.
Yeah.
The closest crew to that area stops what they're doing safely.
Yeah.
Puts whatever they're doing away, and then they head to that.
Yeah.
And-
Like I said, I'm not trying to complain or sound like an ass, but that was just a little unacceptable to me.
The only thing we wish we had was the red and blue lights.
Yeah.
We don't have those.
Yeah.
We have the yellow lights. We have to stop it all.
Yeah.
And bait, you know, all the traffic.
Yeah. Really good. It was just, it was early in the day, and like I said, I was just upset seeing the news reporters before I saw you guys with our first responders out there fighting, which was a pretty wild fire in a building that had gasoline tanks in it, supposedly an illegal paint shop, a whole bunch of stuff in there, which could have went a lot worse, and it did. Good way that wire was, they kind of stopped fighting that while you guys weren't there. So, that's just, that's it for me. Thank you, though.
That's good.
Appreciate you coming and boss.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Cardinal? Thank you for coming in. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to committee reports. Are there any committee that wants to give their report tonight? Quiet week. Okay, we took care of Item L. We will now move on to old business, which we do not have any. We have no new business. And we'll move on to Item O, Citizens' Comments. Are there any citizens that wish to comment during the Citizens' Comments portion of the meeting?
Hi, Janet Hanson, Pleasant Street, Bridgewater. First of all, I want to just say I agree with what Mr. Alvaldi said and Ms. Larson and the VFW. I agree with everything they said, and I hope the Town Council can, you know, support or look into that. I think it would be nice to have, instead of a district, veterans would be just strictly to Bridgewater. I just want to comment about the speaking at the meetings. I'm just a little confused what Mr. Dutton had said. Lately, I've been going to a lot of these planning board meetings over the years, and I've never had it until recently where we're not allowed to comment on anything that's on the agenda. And these were not closed items. These were public, and all of a sudden, we weren't able to comment. And I and others were caught off guard by that. And when I listened to what Mr. Dutton had said, it said that they, you're encouraged to comment about what's on the agendas. You can't comment, which I understand if it's a closed item now, but these weren't closed. So, I still confused on those meetings that I had attended, and we were told that we couldn't. And they were, we were told by the CED Director that we couldn't comment on anything that was on the agenda. And then, we were like stuck with, okay, well, what am I going to comment about? I'm not here to comment on what time it is. So, I just want to clarify that. What I heard tonight, it sounds like we're supposed to be able to comment on what's on the agenda. And so, I just need clarify, you know, on that. And again, I just hope you support what Mr. Alvaldi said and Tina Larson and the VFW. Thank you, and thank you for your time.
Are there any other citizens here wish to speak during Citizens' Comments?
And Ivaldi Boxwood Lane, just to follow up to what I had said earlier. So, it looks like, based on the feedback from Mr. Dutton and our Town Attorney, Article II, Section 14 of the Admin Code needs to be re-looked at and potentially rewritten because it specifically says, "All inquiries made by citizens should be responded to if the information is available at the time." So, that gives you, if you have the information, you're right now supposed to give it back. If I ask you a question and you have the answer to that question, you're supposed to give it back to me according to the Admin Code. So, take that as an action item to review that and rewrite it if you need to. Thank you.
Carlton Hunt, Austin Street. I second what he just said about commenting, because I read it to you a month ago. And it's required by the Admin Code that if you know, if someone asks a question, you're required to answer it if you know the answer that night or at a future meeting. So, please take it to heart and make the changes as necessary. Also, I just want to say in terms of public comments, I really thank you guys for the conversation on that. To clarify, I personally was muted by a town employee during a public comment session. I reached out to the Attorney General's Office. I never filed the open meeting violation because I chose to say, maybe it'll go away. But since then, that individual has shut down other people during public comments. I'm going to ask the Town Manager to please train your employees about open meeting law and speaking and public comment, please. It's way past due that the committees, boards, and commissions get the training he talked about tonight. I've been doing this for 20 years, and I haven't really had good training, but I've gone to a lot of trainings. So, it's really important for you guys to enforce that promise. Secondly, the Form-based Code that was sent to advertising tonight, it's very clear that it is too long to go into a newspaper. Charter says it must go to a brochure at least 10 days before the final vote, or it needs to be put on the website in its full form. So, I'm requesting for sure tonight that it be put up on that front page of the Wedge website where there's three boxes, important things are happening. It needs to be posted there so the people can look at the final form. And my last question on that particular one is, is there going to be a hearing at that next meeting, or are all the hearings done? You can answer it later if you want. Lastly, I want to thank my fellow veterans for speaking out. I agree with them. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wish to speak? Yes, ma'am?
Hello, this is Jean De Batista again, 260 Lakeside Drive. I'd also like to comment on public comments. I do think there are some issues. I do think public input should be sought on what those issues and experiences have been. I have been attending a number of Town Committee meetings myself, and there is a tremendous amount of issues going on with public comments. Everything from when letters are being sent in about a particular issue, I do think they should be published, and I think they should be made available to the public on the towns' websites. And whether that is happening has been inconsistent and frustrating to the public, because sometimes we are being asked to come down to this office in order to get documents that we need, in order to have the information we need to be able to intelligently comment on an issue. And in some cases, there are committees that are fully publishing them on the town website. In other cases, we're being told, no, you have to go and come and get this information. You have to make copies of it. In this day of technology, I don't think that's appropriate. It doesn't take a lot of effort to publish a document to a website, especially if it's been done in the past, so there is ability to do that. Secondly, I do feel as a member of the public who's sent in a number of letters on certain issues, and I know this is shared by other members of the public that I know, that sometimes these issues are not addressed, even if they've been sent in great detail, and we've asked for specific responses, we still do not get a response. So, it feels as if the comment went into a black hole and nothing has happened. So, I do think it is important for this group to seek public input on what's been going on in some of these meetings and some of the frustrations that the public has had when using, when the public has gone through a great deal of time and effort to research an issue and then hasn't actually gotten a response. So, thank you for listening, and that's it.
Is there anybody else who wish to speak during Citizens' Comments? Seeing none, we will move on to Council Comments. I'll start with Counsel Lindy.
Oh, boy, I get to go first. Well, I just want to thank all the citizens that came tonight to speak up on all the different issues. I like to see people come to the meeting and comment, and I also think that we should get answers if we know the information, and it shouldn't go into a black hole. I just want to thank the Council and the Town Manager for having the National Grid representative here to tell us a little bit more information. I don't think you spoke out of turn, Brad. That was a real, you know, dangerous situation, and you witnessed it firsthand. I think we had a good meeting tonight. That's all I have.
Counsel Chase.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also would like to thank everyone in attendance and particularly those persons who have corresponded with members of the Council. I know that I have corresponded by email with, by now, a number of people. I want to say even three or four people in the past two days with respect to the matter of downtown revitalization. And I've enjoyed the dialogue. I think that some very thoughtful comments have been raised then and certainly here once again this evening. I certainly hope that those of you in attendance tonight will consider returning to our next meeting on the subject, and I thank you for your input, and that's what I have to say.
Counsel McKinnon.
Yep. Just want to echo what they said about the citizens coming in here. It does kind of keep us on our toes when there's more people in the room than maybe two at most. Also, want to bring up the boys over in 225. I appreciate you guys coming on over here. I hope Mr. Dutton heard everything you said, because no matter left, center, or right, you were the guys that go out to war, you lose brothers, you do what a lot of people don't think about doing, and it's kind of disgusting, to be honest, how I've heard you guys have no representation for a while now. And from what Mike said to us, what was it, last meeting? We don't really have a say. It's all on him if we're a district or not. And I just really hope whatever we do, we do it the right way for you guys, because you guys deserve it more than anyone else in this town. I mean, when I was 18, I wanted to serve, but I have stomach problems. 11 years later, I'm still dealing with them. I have an MRI tomorrow. Hopefully, they figure out what's wrong, but that's going off track there. But I just want to thank you guys for your service and coming here, and I really hope the town can take care of you guys, because you deserve it more than anyone in this whole community. Thank you. That's it for me.
Counsel Murphy.
Thank you. Thank you to everyone that came out this evening and spoke. I took great notes. I hope to follow up with each and every one of you. I especially wanted to thank the folks from the VFW that came by today and spoke. I know I met with you all personally separately outside of this meeting, and Brad kind of stole my thunder there. But second, everything that Brad said, I hope Mr. Dutton and those folks heard that message loud and clear. It's nice to see that the VFW has a strong stance on that, and so, I support that and hope we can continue to support that as a Town Council through whatever means or avenues we can. And I hope we can continue to make those small efforts and changes to support those folks. So, thank you for your service, and you have my support as well.
Counsel Perry.
Thank you. Again, thank you all for coming out. Great comments, great feedback, as always. In just regards to, you know, the feedback, I certainly encourage anyone who has particular questions that they're curious about getting answers to, send it to one of us, send it to all of us in form of a question via email. We can individually answer you. If we don't have the answer, we can get it. Again, based on certain rules and formats, we might not be able to answer it right away if we don't have the information at hand right away. But I don't think any one of us wouldn't hesitate to do that research and get you the answer that you need. So, do not hesitate to reach out to any one of us via email. And to the veterans that are here, again, thank you for your presence, guys. We want to get a Veterans Agent in place as soon as possible that's going to give you the appropriate representation that you need. So, I'm all in favor of that as well. That's all I got. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counsel Robinson.
I don't have too much. I apologize that I was delayed tonight, so I'm sorry that I missed some of the comments from this, from the beginning of the meeting. But thank you for being here, and I do have to say, it has been impressive to see this many people continue to show up at the Town Council meetings. So, thanks for taking some of your evenings to be with us and give feedback. I am a little concerned about some of the confusion, and, because I think I'm actually left more confused than I was walking into the meeting than I was about public comments. So, it feels like this might be something that we should dig into as a council to make sure everyone is not confused. And I also would like to follow up, and I'll take that separately with Mr. Dutton in terms of the question around, sorry, I'm losing my train of thought here. I've been up since 4:30. Around, as a co-sponsor of the Form-Based Code ordinance in terms of the advertising, what's available to the public, where it's really showing up, just really wanting to understand the details so that we're really clear, making sure that we're giving the community a chance to have access to the full details so that they can be as informed as possible. So, like I said, I'll take that as an action item to follow up on that. Thank you.
Thank you. And just want to reiterate what everyone had said tonight, is thanks, everyone, for showing up tonight and airing your concerns and asking your questions, and particularly the VFW post that came here tonight to address their concern. And again, that issue will be back on our agenda on March 12th. I hope at that point, we're a little clearer on, have we hired a Vets' Agent yet, and are we still going to move forward with the district? And what role do we have as a counselor? You know, are we supposed to support that district or not? What vote do we have? There's three of us are going to be off the Council on April 23rd. I will be one of them, and I'm hoping that this issue is resolved, or at least we know where we're going by, before April 23rd, but at least before I leave the Council. And also, that was, what was addressed earlier, I hope the Town Manager does take a look at the campaign sign issue and whether people can post, you know, post signs up prior to 30 days or what kind of teeth there is in that enforcement. So, again, thanks, everyone, for coming out. It's always appreciated by us, because sometimes we sit here and we look at nobody for a long time. But we appreciate a constructive conversation. That's what we like to have here. So, again, I appreciate it. That ends tonight's evening, tonight's meeting this evening. We do not have an executive session scheduled this evening, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, move. Second.
Whoa.
All those in favor?
Aye.